Councilman Esser?
Here.
Councilman Bunch? Councilwoman Nancy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Here.
Councilman McGuire? Councilman Lipsky?
We have some crazy government like ourselves.
Mayor Francio?
Here.
Turn down the TV.
He wants to negate it.
Officer, would you lead us in the public briefing?
... of the United States of America. This republic is the country's stand. One nation under God, and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, public announcements. We are getting closer, and that would be to the 14th and 15th next week. The Taste of Cape Creek, the annual community get-together and gather of our providers of cuisine, not only here in Cape Creek, but in the area communities. Two-day event, great fun, it goes for a good cause, and I know the marshal, he's been working very, very hard on that, on his staff, and so... Okay, if we can't join the public, then we just gotta stop.
Mr. Lipsky, do you have a TV on or something that you could turn down?
No.
Thank you.
I don't think you can do that.
Always get us on board.
So, that's the Taste of Cape Creek coming up next week. Call the public, Karen?
Ryan Baraños of MCSO, vice mayor of council.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the community. My name is Ryan Baraños, I'm the lieutenant with the sheriff's office. I was recently transferred back to the area after spending a short time in this part of the valley. Prior to that, I spent about thirteen years in this area, both as a deputy sergeant and now as lieutenant, so second commander now. So, it's good, great to be back home, closer to home, so it's good to see all you guys again. I'm looking forward to great things in the town. I did the introductions over in Cape Creek, so I'm very aware of it. So, that's enough about me. I just wanted to share with everyone that this Saturday, October 10th, at 10:00 AM, the sheriff's office is working in conjunction with the Daisy Mountain Fire Department at the desert Blue Bible Church, which 105 West Cape Creek Highway. And I actually have some flyers that I'll leave around the table for anyone that's interested. And what this is, is this is an effort between the two departments to display public safety. Fire trucks, we're gonna have our SWAT team there, we'll have some canine dogs and their operators, we'll have some tactical units, so on and so forth. We're doing demonstrations along with the fire department, we'll show these tactics to the audience, we'll do some demonstrations. It's just more of an opportunity for the youth and some of the folks that live in this area to come out and see firsthand and touch the equipment and interact with the deputies on a more personal level, as opposed to just responding to calls. So, this would be a great time to shake hands and get to know some of the first responders in the area. I understand it's outside the town limits, however, it's close enough where folks that live in the area are more than welcome to join. So, I strongly encourage anyone that would like to come out and join us for Public Safety Days to come on, and it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so it's only for four hours. In addition to our two departments, Honor Health, which is former John C. Lincoln, I believe, was the name of it, they're now Honor Health, they're gonna be there putting on first aid, injury prevention, and education, and there's gonna be helicopters out there, which is probably the coolest part of all of this. It'll be the sheriff's office helicopter, we have a brand helicopter that will be on display. And in addition to that, the ROPAC, which is obviously a valuable helicopter, will be there as well. So, it's a very opportune for you to get your climate and already put on some stuff. See, there's some of the brochures submitted out, so anyone who wants to come out, please pass the word, it's great for everybody, and it's actually a treat as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Call the public, Mr. Lipsky?
Kathy Jones, did you not say call the public or another issue? Uh, call the public, okay. Council people, mayors, my name is Kathy Jones, and I live at 6042 Hidden Valley Drive here in Cape Creek. My husband and I have lived here for fifteen years and up. And what I'm here today for is my concern, if you know where the Lucky Food Bank is, I live right next door. My property abuts their property. Now, I was told that they have been given the thumbs up to build a huge piece of building on their property. Years ago, before they got the property, I knew that their property was built to the max, so I really didn't have anything to worry about. My investment of fifteen years, I thought, was safe, maybe a good place to retire, but now I'm told no, that they will be building, they will be building a two-story place abutting to my property. That puts them way over the limit of, let me see, what is it called? It is the, well, it's the planning limits, that you can only have so much building on your properties. And I would like, when this comes to council, for you to remember that I was up here talking about this. We have had nothing but problems with the food bank, from rodent problems to homeless, to, let me just get on my list here, vandalism, theft, vehicles ruffled through, public urination, right in front of them. And when I asked them, "Please put up signs on your restrooms so your people could go to the restroom there," they said, "Well, we don't want those people in our restrooms," so they would go across the street. They were also dumping their food, their excess food, across the street until I called them doing that, and then they were dumping it in the back of their buildings. I didn't catch on to that for some time before the rat problem and the rodent problem on my property is very bad. So, then they tried to correct that with rat baits, that's poisonous, that makes you bleed out, when my cat got hold of it. This is just an ongoing with the food bank. And before they're given any thumbs up to get bigger and bigger, I hope that you all remember this, that for these last two years, it is absolutely one thing after another. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, I have had the marshal and the deputies out to help me with removing some of the vagrants that live there now. We never had this problem before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... Karen?
Paul Deepen River?
Paul Deepen River, Cape Creek citizen. Bernie talked to me early, he said, "You hear a complaint?" He says, "Nobody ever comes here to say you're doing a good job." Well, I just wanna say thanks, I know you're not doing this for the money, and really appreciate your efforts. Two things, one, Saturday, 10:30 in the morning, the museum, we're running the stamp mill. If you haven't had a chance to come by and see that, come by and check it out. It's a really cool machine from the late 1800s, and it can maim and destroy people if you're not careful. You don't get to go by the fence, but it's a fun machine. I've been working on it for years. So, come by and check it out. So, a while back ago, Johnny Ringo spoke to this council. As part of his speech, he said, quote, "The council has lost the trust of Cape Creek residents one by one. We all heard great people, residents, saying they are disgusting and they're not going to town meetings anymore. We lost them one by one," unquote. Ironically, at that same council meeting as Reg Monacina was sitting down after speaking, Don Sorcek called him an asshole loud enough that it was heard throughout the room. Not one of you made a peep about how inappropriate Don's behavior was. Vice Mayor Lamar has called Cape Creek citizens "the town's greatest asset." I agree a 100%. I do think you need to treat your greatest asset with a little more respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsky. Chris Carey?
Jim, I can't read, go ask Wes.
Welsh. I'm Jim Welsh at 39111 North 26th Street, Cape Creek resident. And I wanna thank you, council people. The energy I feel in here compared to past years gone by is, seems much better and greater, and it seems to be a cooperative lot, so we get along well. The reason I'm gonna speak tonight was, I texted Mr. Lamar this summer, 'cause I left for three months, and was curious as to the progress of the water hookup on 26th Street, how that was coming along. And I was directed to City Hall, and there was a friend's arm, he was pretty good to work with, and when I went in there, he was gone. So, I really didn't know where we stand on that, if our residents are gonna, out there are gonna get any closer to getting hooked up than we were. And the other request I have is to find out if I need to talk to Mr. Stein about getting a traffic, one of those traffic carts that has the posted mile per hour that you're driving out our way. We could set it up out there sometime and maybe slow down a few of these guys that are going 90 on 26th Street. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Welsh, if you make an appointment to get the marshal and or the town manager about the water on the west side, and the marshal about the traffic across the... Miss Carey?
No, I don't want to speak with her.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, Town Manager, anything?
Mayor and council, I have a couple things, just some updates. Surro Road Trail, we have, we've had some difficulty trying to work out an alternate trail route up there, so my discussion with Bambi Bureau, the head of the trails and staff, we should start hiring an RFP to put the trail in along the current path, which is the up and down line, so our best to do that. Second, had a meeting with Spur Cross Stables, that, Lee Anderson, who owns that and runs that, that particular agreement has expired some time ago, so we're gonna have a process of crafting a new agreement, to bring to council on that. Couple of things we're gonna do that I'm gonna add to that, is they do kind of an informal course rusture, so we're gonna try to formalize that a little bit, and it isn't all what I think, but they might use at the council, we're gonna do that. Third, had a meeting with the Shrinor and Avi, they're trying to work on a program where they're gonna start displaying some art in the public areas, like this building, you know, the building across the street, for that. Spur Cross Conservation Area, met with the county representatives, JR, on that, trying to get more involved in the capital acquisition and capital development of the park, it's part of the IGA, haven't done that for a number of years, so part of the discussion is, for the funds that we send to them, what can we do, how can we improve it, simply more new restrooms, trail improvement, variety of different things, so we're gonna step that process. October 19th meeting, myself, county director, building official, on the outer town, which will run this that meeting on that particular day, so we're trying to keep it fairly short that doesn't require us to be there. And lastly, you saw some individuals walk around town hall, they've started the field work, the onsite visit for the artist for last year, hoping that will be done this week and in a month, so we should have the... That's all, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the consent of the general, that is the approval of September 21st, 2015, regular council meeting, that is motion to approve. Motion made a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilor, if you are willing to hear us? Under the general, the general, council discussion, second reading, ordinance number 2015-005, it was empty line. Mark, Mark, there's somebody there that's calling from, to us. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna sign off, I know the camera's here. Everybody give a thought for the rest, yeah, go on.
Okay, what are we? What are we saying on you? Okay, now, to the record, we saw that Councilman Lipsky is no longer on with the council. Creating a law that changes between the town of Cape Creek and the Honeytode Restaurant property by abandoning a small portion of the desert where it's parked for the purposes of a non-motorized trail easement. Again?
Mayor, members of council, there are no additional changes to the agreements. Staff continues to work for, with that company on getting this done last, so we can do that this week.
Okay, questions from council? Is there a question?
No.
There's only common one, agenda number one. Back to council for a motion, council bunch.
Move to the second reading, ordinance number 2015-005, ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cape Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, creating a law that exchanges between the town of Cape Creek and the Honeytode property by abandoning a small portion of the desert where it's parked, 3805 North Vermesque Road, ATN number 216-07-053, and a portion of the town right away located in front of the Honeytode property, for the purpose of implementing a non-motorized trail easement to be located on a portion of the partial address 6738 East Cape Creek Road, ATN number 216-06-069, and commonly known as the Honeytode Restaurant property, in exchange for a portion of the desert where it's parked, and a portion of the town right away.
Motion made, and several seconds, council, aye.
Yeah, this gives us access from the wash behind Cape Creek Road, it's a much better way to get there for people who like the trail down there.
Vice Mayor Lamar, do you have a second? Do you have a higher... Councilman McGuire?
I only comment here, I don't wanna comment. Then I'll defer, it's one thing, Bambi again, the planning staff, and also our attorney, Mr. Stevens, for working the south, and having a tight agreement, it's a good job.
Anything else from council, Councilman McGuire?
Thanks to our planning department and Bambi, this is a big win, and we'd like more.
Well, there's a common to approve the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes create the habit, only six are you voting. General, number two, council discussion, second reading of ordinance 02015-06, abandoning the town of Cape Creek Road Title III Administration, Chapter 37 Revenue and Finance, Section 37.2, procedure generally by increasing expenditure limitations. Town Manager?
Mayor and council, just sort of chat from last time we met, looking to increase the limits, we got procurement or purchasing off-the-shelf items from 2,500 to 5,000. Items at a non-construction to bids from 2,500 to 5,000 to 5,000, 15,000. Construction bid requiring three bids from 5,000 to 15,000, and anything requiring council approval, anything over 25,000 dollars.
Questions from council? Anything else, Town Manager?
That's all.
Okay, there's public comment, on agenda number two. Okay, we're back to council. Councilman Escher, motion?
Motion, and I've added the word, to give second reading, that's housekeeping. Motion to give second reading to ordinance 02015-06, as ordinance of the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, amending the town of Cape Creek Town Code Title III Administrative Chapter 37 Revenue and Finance, Section 37.2, procedure generally by increasing expenditure limitations.
Correct. Motion made a second, Councilman Escher?
It's obviously housekeeping, it needs to be done.
Councilman McGuire, you have a second?
Yes, this brings us in line with procedures in other towns, gives the town manager the what he needs in order to make good decisions on behalf of Cape Creek.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, clearly codified, five to one. General, number 3,000, discussion on second reading of ordinance 02015-07, amending the town of Cape Creek Town Code Chapter 52 Water, amending sections 52.02, 03, 01, 101, and 307, and providing for severability, Town Manager?
Mayor and council, thank you. This is more in my mind a housekeeping, it clarifies oversight of all personnel, it provides, if there was a change or an adjustment made to a customer's account, it just can't be made by the utility manager, it also has to be approved by the finance director, and also limits the construction of water facilities, five water services, where there's no water service limits that, I think we're, in my mind, if we're gonna expand water lines, hopefully sewer lines, should have, at least my review, which would at least come to account with this substantial project. So, I see this as more of a housekeeping and clarifying some issues.
Questions from council? Councilman Bunch?
Yeah, I've got one. In that 52.017, maybe I missed something, we're talking exceptions, it says in town, well, obviously our water service area is way beyond the limits of the town.
That is, that's true.
Yeah, should we do something there?
Yeah, it should be within the water service area, not in town, within the water service area.
Yeah, that was, that was the one thing that I saw, and I meant, I forgot to ask you before the meeting, I know I wouldn't spring this on you like this, but I forgot.
Mine was like, thank you.
So, where's it gonna go? The sheriff, can you do this, or the motion, council? Councilwoman, can I say?
On paragraph B, you have in yellow, all personnel. Are you saying the utilities manager won't be in charge of the personnel?
Yeah, there's a conflict within the codes, joining the town manager has authority over all personnel, whether it's building and planning. This wouldn't have, when it was crafted back in the day, all personnel under the utilities managers, so he theoretically or she could theoretically make those changes. That was odd within how we're organizing, how we operate, so depending on how we treat all of this personnel in all departments, I decided to have, I asked to have that struck out, so everyone should do the same, and works the same way. I don't mind being the ultimate authority, I hope you need that division.
So, the ultimate authority over all personnel working at these operations, operations is who?
Myself. Town Manager.
So, you work more closely, but councilor working very well?
It's a small shop, I'm all, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
There's no questions from council? There's public comment on agenda number three. Okay, Councilman Bunch, let me come to you for the motion and the...
Well, we need to give second reading to ordinance number 2015-07, ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cape Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cape Creek Town Code Chapter 52 Water, amending sections 52.002, 52.003, 52.017, 52.111, and 52.307, and providing for severability with the change to 52.017 from the word town in the second sentence to the service area.
We need a second, council?
Same.
There's a second, council, aye?
Yeah, it makes sense to do this stuff.
It is consistent with our home government and my agreement.
Anything else from council, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clap, have a, please, if you will vote. General, number four. Council discussion and direction regarding any possible changes to the banner of the program, what is required of councils to give direction to the staff, this item was put on the agenda by the vice chair, so we will start with Chris Carey.
Thank you. I brought this up, and the timing is a little off, because one of my concerns was that we, although I wasn't there, I did have learned firsthand that from the beginning, this banner project has had some troubles, as it went along and as it evolved, after this first begun, and I was really troubled that we hadn't been paid as a result of this agreement, profit sharing agreement, where we supplied or purchased all of the materials for all the banner poles, but had never been paid any money back according to the agreement. That has been rectified to some extent, but I wanna make sure going forward, if we have this program, that we live up to the terms of that agreement. And number three is sort of a personal observation, and I'm here making this statement and inviting, you know, discussion on it. I have never found them, two things, one, as I recall, that these were pitched as promoting the town core and promoting the town. I see subdivision, Phoenix subdivision signs down on Cape Creek Highway, I haven't seen much in the way of promotion of the town core. And secondly is, if we're gonna put something in our media, I think it ought to be a step up, I think it ought to make our medians at least more attractive, or at a very minimum, not make them unattractive. And since it is such a, and by design, an observable item in our medians, in our public driveways, I think it should be aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the town core theme of western. From my view, we have galvanized commercial attachments on banners that many times are sagging and faded on just a basic sort of a, you know, rusty metal. I don't mind the rusty metal so much, but you could spend a little bit of money, a little bit of investment, and make these, at least have some more cross-hatch supports, or some, something that gives them some kind of flair, if we're gonna go forward and do it. Personally, I think they are a detraction, I don't think they served the purpose they were meant to, and I'm not so sure that we should continue beyond any further agreements with the program. But if we do, I wanna throw out for conversation the fact that we make them so that they're, you know, again, if we're putting stuff in our media, it ought to be something that everybody goes, "Wow, that's neat," not go, "Oh, gee, that's the kind of," just as an example, the kind of connectors you're using or adding to put the rafters in. So, that's my own personal view, and that's why I wanna start out and talk about that, and we have support, we have support. But I'm not, I'm concerned about the whole, and I guess fundamentally too, I'm concerned about the whole thing, I'm not sure where the money goes as far as the shared income, I'm assuming it goes to the events committee, and I do have some fundamental problems about the town taking over events that were done by the former chamber of Congress, and also in this way subsidizing that chamber of Congress if in fact we give them money back, particularly when they're not getting paid for even our share on the payback for the poles. So, I have some concern about that also, but that's sort of legendary.
Okay, before I go to the rest of the council, Town Manager, can you update us on the financial situation in regards to the banner?
In broad summary, the program has nine poles, one pole is of the town, eight poles are under the control of the CCMEA. Those eight poles cost, both design, materials installation, are 6,600, in that range, paid recently, in the last month, paid back, I believe, it's $4,500 for the program, just a small balance to remain. The discussion I had with the president of the CCMEA, as they rent out, or lease out, or make renovations for those signs, we would collect 50% of the revenues, and they would keep 50% of the revenues. I had the same concern, Vice Mayor had, did a number, it's been a long period of time before we see that in financial, return on that, so I wanna make sure we cut that.
Okay, we understand, Mayor, is there an explanation as to why, as the banners were sold, the town was not receiving?
I just think there was, there was changes in personnel within the CCMEA, I think that affected some of the... So, I think that's all screened out now. Hopefully, by the end of this time next year, I would think before that, some of those agreements that come out, the program would have reimbursed the town the $6,600 and change. At that time, under council direction of the time, 80% of the money goes, stays with the CCMEA, 20% comes to the town. That money just goes in the general fund. That money just goes in the general fund, and just gets allocated to the budget, and approve the budget. So we visit the American special spot, it's just a reimbursement for the fund, the revenues. At, at this point, there's not much to say. I do know some of the banners, they use staples to hold them together and stuff, and that does not really work, especially within the ones we've had and stuff. So I think it has to be a better design on that. And if you go to a lot of communities, there are banners out there, so it's not brain surgery, not people have done it. You should be able to figure it out, but right now, that's where we are with the program.
We're going to hear from all of council, vice mayor? Vice mayor?
I have some couple of questions.
Yes.
Is there any, anything that I, I looked at the little, I think it's a one B agreement that...
The M O, yeah.
Okay. There isn't, there isn't anything that talks about making sure that the, the plastic banners that are hanging on these poles, that they're turned around so that they're in good repair? That there isn't any kind of safeguard at all, that what we have in our driveways doesn't look tacky, for lack of a better term? So how long is this agreement in place now that we have? Is this just agreement on a payback? Or do we have some sort of a commitment, a length of time that we are committed to this project?
I don't know about the time, you, the financial payback, was said to be done as, more as soon as possible. So they always think about a year or two years on that program. I, I don't know about the quality design of the banners, I don't think that's an agreement. I think that can be a discussion that town can have with the CCMEA, but that process goes with CCMEA.
So as it speaks this, we don't have any, any kind of leverage as a community about how those banners and those poles are maintained so that they're not under attractive and, and, right? And we, that's just, we're giving them, we're putting our medians, and we have no control over what they look like? Is that, is that the state, yes or no?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think it's a failed assessment.
Okay, now, are the eighty percent of the revenues going forward that goes to the?
CCMEA.
CC, the, the old chamber, what is, what is that used for?
I do not know, that would be a question for the CCMEA. There's no guidelines by the council direct, by the previous council director or under the M O. There's no, they use that as a seat fit.
And what's the origin of this program? Was that a Mr. Glasser negotiation?
I know it's pre-Peter. I think, to be honest, I think so, but I know, I just know it's, it's already evolved by the time I got here, I just...
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilman Bunch?
I think the Vice Mayor is leaving something here that is a very good idea. We should keep an eye on these things. The change in leadership of the CCMEA has been, in my mind, problematic. We were, for a while, getting absolutely nothing. And with the new leadership of the CCMEA, there is quite a change. I think that looking at this evolving long range is very important. And what the Vice Mayor has to say is well taken, and it's something that should have attention from all of us ongoing.
The change has been helpful.
Councilman Bussler?
Just a couple of comments. My understanding in the agreements, the maintenance of the signs is to be done by the owners. And the second comment is being, if you make the reference to the poles down on Sherfree Highway, which in American Homes is in Cave Creek. It's the remainder of my given, it's right next to the man who used to live, so they're not in peace. And those are nice signs, they're running there. The comment about how they appear in town is correct, they kind of look, so I'm not sure, but I understand that the interim Town Manager, Ron Glasser, is a little bit old to go.
Councilman Bunch?
Yeah, I supported this when it came out last time, but I'll, I'll tell you, boy, every year, we would cut a check for ten thousand dollars to CCMEA, and my goal for this was to stop doing that. And basically, then paid their own way with signs that we put out that we got paid back for. That, that was my whole point of doing that, was to keep raising the general fund for, for other, other things. And if it works, that's wonderful, you know. I think even if you read the, the note from back there, and they just stated that time that that was what it's looking for, was they would come back looking for money, looking for money from this for, for events. So if it, if it ends up working that way, I'm taking a bet. If it don't work that way, well, I'm not as happy, but I'm a little happy. And you're right, notes there.
No, just a way of, of comment, just as, as a discussion.
Yeah.
Because that's what I really want. It seems to me that it's gone backwards, because now, not only are we still financially supporting the chamber, we're also, had taken over Wild West Days, and are putting it on as a town, rather than what that is.
I will have that worked.
And so for, for two years, we're going to be doing that. So it seems like we're taking more and more obligation on, as a community, that was once done by CCMEA. My big problem is that we don't have any, my real problem is if we're going to do this, make it something that's an attractive, attractive, and make it something that is a step up for the medians, and then, then that's fine, I understand the business side of it. But when they're, when they're not, and there is, it seems to me there hasn't been, there isn't, there isn't any contract that requires it, and it, and it doesn't seem to have happened voluntarily. And I, it costs a lot for design, but I don't see much of a design there. That's what they do when the rafters up in your attic. So I'm, I'm with you. If, if, if that was the goal, then I would say that the, at least the history to date is that it's going the other way.
Council, Councilwoman Classy?
I think, excuse me, a question. When I read through the contract and the information, it just basically said there were two companies you could get printing done by. Why are we telling them what company is to go to? It would seem to me if I want to put up a sign, I should be able to go and choose any company at any price. I, as an individual, would want to go and get it done by. And it's in the contract that there were two proposed to go to.
They may have been, I mean, I don't recall that, it's not in the M O, I can't recall that by hand. Other than, I know they wanted to have this, try to keep the business open. Sure enough, from one of those, it was a document, helps or whatever, sort of trying to keep the business, but they're not, that's all.
You and I had a different discussion, I'm not so...
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm in agreement with it, but you can't keep people from doing what they do. So if they found a company that that is their business, truly sign business, and we're looking for better quality, and they're willing to pay more, then they have the choice of doing that. So I, that should be in the contract too. As opposed to...
Okay, this is the discussion portion of the council. We're going to go to public comment, and then we're going to come back to council to give some sort of direction to staff after hearing all this discussion. The comment is open on agenda item number four.
Paul, you've been open?
Me again. When this project first got started, I was approached by the town to, I was a bit of in on these signs, Colonel Glassner, who had a nice middle work, that was way too busy, and the galvanized stuff is, is horrid.
Thank you. I said we're not researching for it.
Yeah, it's horrid. So I'd like to offer that if you decide to continue the program, that I would redo those brackets and stuff, and no charge to the town, just to give that up, because it can be done really nice, and not, no really expense on my part.
You could take notes on this?
If you guys keep it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you indeed.
Thanks, Paul, get that...
Carrie Smith?
Carrie Smith, Cave Creek resident. This was a controversial issue when it was initially proposed, and I remember Councilman Bunch's comments and other comments about this. Because of the lack of delineation of control and oversight of what was in the banners, and the question of, if there were multiple merchants who wanted to put on the banners, put their banners up there, how would that be decided and done of that? It was, we were assured that it would all be worked out, but apparently it wasn't in the contract. The question I had is, since the bike lane, or trail, or whatever it's called, that we're putting in to widen, to reduce the size of the median, and to widen the section of road that's available for bikes, does that not offer an opportunity to rethink the issue of these banners? Because the median is going to be now smaller, and this, they could well be hazardous in their current design and placement. So I just wondered if this gives us, even if the contract doesn't itself, offer an opportunity for reconsideration. Other decisions may require reconsideration, and I would urge us to think more carefully about these kinds of issues, restructuring the contract, and oversight of the banners and all the rest. Now, there are a couple of banners about the taste of Cave Creek. I can't remember where I saw those, but they were near the entrance, the intersection of Sherfree Highway, I think, and Cave Creek Road. And those looked pretty nice, at least the banners did. But I think the bigger issue is oversight maintenance and so forth. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Smith. Ms. Carrie?
I know that is speaker's name.
What else wishes to speak? Tell that...
Just a point of reference, I know the traffic engineers on D-DOT, who receive the bike project, actually look at the little banners. From my understanding, those don't provide a hazard, just according to that project.
Okay, we are back to council. Let me make a couple of observations, and then we'll go. What's before the council is to give direction to staff. I was in agreement with Councilman Bunch. I thought this was a, a good way to get funds into the local chamber without going into the funds of the town annually for this purpose. In other words, it would be produced by the banner program. But the points brought up, the quality of signs, there's going to have to be some way to address the aesthetics of what's going up before it goes up. The accountability to the town by the local chamber has to be included in this. The maintenance of the signs, once or not, who is taking care of, who is responsible? Is it the town, or is it the sponsor of the sign? And the fourth point I, I thought is the restricting of advertising. In other words, are these banners to be strictly connected to things going on in the town? Or can they accept advertisers from outside the community that have nothing to do with, with Cave Creek? What, what I... The other thing is the upgrading of the poles, so there's five points there. The thing is, Paul, if you're going to do service to the town, your services are going to be paid for?
You can't, you can't afford me so.
Yes, I, I know that very well. But anyways, that can be worked out. So what, what I would suggest to you, since we're giving direction to the staff, is that two members of council volunteer, and I know you're all, is, volunteered to go with the Town Manager and go over the old agreement, and bring, bring the agreement back to council, which, over the five points that I just mentioned, which is what council, I think, is looking for.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to volunteer.
Okay, and volunteer, and Councilman Deser, wonderful, we have two volunteers.
Can we include the CC, I mean, their part of it, should they sit down?
Yeah.
And that's a good, no, that's a good suggestion. Okay, and, and then bring, bring a, a motion, I'm sorry, bring a re-let agreement back to council that at least addresses these five points. Vice Mayor?
I just want to make sure that our attorney has a chance to review that before it comes back.
Okay, Councilman Bunch?
Yeah, I, I have a question. The restriction to a couple of vendors for those signs, if that clearly changed so that the people buying those signs have a choice other than something?
That's a good point. I mean, I don't run that aspect of the program, dealing with the quality of the signs, or the vendors, that's through the CCMEA. They obviously that.
It was, it was clear when, when we talked about this, we would give preference to local businesses. There was a particular amount that was to be charged, and I think that should be followed. The restriction to a couple of vendors does not seem prior.
Though what Councilman Classy is saying is we should not restrain trade, that's what you're saying.
Well, I, no, I, I think I'm just, that somebody might want a higher quality sign, and there might be somebody else that can give that person that option. Trust me, that, that business is a very interesting business, yeah, I just...
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, and, and, and we're going to make sure we're looking forward now. So this is direction of what we put in an agreement, looking forward. And if we can't come to an agreement, then we have a different solution, which is we don't do this. But this is looking forward, so just how things are now, saying, "Oh, I don't do that." Well, we need some more input on this, on this partnership.
I would also say the relationships there were in the past were troubling and concerning, and we regret they have changed, so.
That's wonderful, and we should have, we should have easy time coming to a mutually beneficial agreement that helps the town, helps the town.
And the sun will rise tomorrow, till around the day. Council, on, I, I'm very conscious of what's being asked as direction to staff, to the, the pressure, but can we discuss one point of this? We don't need to, and one point being, should the, the, if all this, all the banners be restricted to Cave Creek businesses? Or...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in light of the Gilbert case, we may have some issues there.
Okay.
Let me talk to the...
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
You're perfectly appropriate to give that direction, but of all your five things, that's the most challenging. The Gilbert case really did throw, limit our ability to restrict signs.
Okay, well, let's, let me come back when the, when the Vice Mayor and the Councilman Deser and staff bring it back to council. That is the pressure, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, council. Last, okay, council, last item, I want to get agenda here. He didn't want to say something, that's right. A council discussion and direction to Town Manager regarding the relocation of the horse statue on Cave Creek Road, Southern Sector statue. Okay, again, this is another, uh, giving staff direction. Councilman Maguire asked for this to be put on the agenda, so we'll begin the discussion with Councilman Maguire.
Yes, I'd like to move down to the table. What I would like to do in this part of the discussion is simply to present some factors. This is not an endorsement of any particular location or changes that will take place, but just looking at the factors that I think we should be considering. And while the computer booms up. I'm not very good at tuning.
Well, I think you're very entertaining.
So far, I haven't...
I've got a favorite one. The real question here is what is the purpose of these monuments? Once we decide what the purpose is, then we can move forward. Are they to delineate where the town boundary is? Are they to help the businesses in the core? But that's something that's very important. Once we've got that, then we can decide where the best placement is. Should there be landscaping, I think that's pretty clear. Can the illumination be added? And clarify that doing this by the grid might be difficult, but we could have some solar illumination at night. And certainly, yardage should be recognized. Is Mr. Carroll here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Carroll did a wonderful job on this. I think that the monument should be highly visible before the cars get into town, and there are a number of places where these can go. Yeah, I'd like it to have a backdrop of the mountain views. Our mountains are beautiful here, and as people are coming into town, there are places where these mountains show up particularly well. Should be a place where cars can, possibly a place where cars can pull over. There's some discussion putting these in the medians, that would not be allowed if they were in the medians. However, one of the considerations that might be thought about is, can cars pull over so people can take photos and send home? so people can take photos and send home? Turned Quebec moment has been used, it's got a few laps, but that's going to be what I need. Thank you. Okay, they should, I'll highlight only Cave Creek. And the issue here that I'm thinking about is that the southern placement of these, of the monument, if a person is coming into Carefree Highway, either east or west, that person would not see the monument as that person's coming into town. And Mr. Carroll certainly should be complimented for the work that he did. I understand that there are some different opinions about what the specifications would be. And Mr. Carroll, as I recall, you ended up putting more materials into this and more work into it than you anticipated. And that certainly is appreciated. And it should be visible for those approaching the town core, all that, that I got. And be easy to monitor. If we go to the next one? Okay, and some blue dots on here illustrate where the, some possible placements. There are certainly others, but I'd like to point out one thing. Notice that where the monument is now, you're essentially going through Cave Creek for approximately a mile. And then for the next two miles or so, you're actually going through Carefree. So I'd just like to point that out. Okay? Okay, this is where the monument is now. It was placed there, I understand there was a discussion between Ian and the interim town manager. And that's how the decision was made as to where it was placed. And I don't think that was an action on the part of the council. Go ahead. Okay, this, this is going back into Cave Creek after you've gone through those two miles of Carefree. You're back in Cave Creek in Quebec. And there really isn't room there to pull my car off and there wasn't time to talk about it. This is a place near Blue Ridge and there is a place there where you can pull over. The mountains are quite visible. This is one of the possible locations. And, and other locations would be possible. Let's see the next slide. Okay, this is the eastern monument and it has a location in the median. The one problem I see with that shows up on the next slide. And this is approaching it from the east. And this is relevant because we don't want this to happen if it's, if it's in the median. You can see there from a distance and I'm standing in the lane here. The trees are covering it, perhaps that can be addressed. I don't know, are those trees in Cave Creek or in Carefree?
They're in.
They're in Cave Creek, so that can be dealt with. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the arrow, the white arrow there shows where the plaque is that honors Mr. Carroll. And like the monument, a little small. The next one is, is one possible way that his credit could be given more clearly so that it's not just somebody going by 50 miles an hour and probably wouldn't tell us that plaque. This is more common if they display. And I, I don't mean this is the way it has to be, but I certainly want to give him credit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could you put the schematic back up so council has reference, Thomas? Consider also the map. The map. There.
I think that's my interpretation.
Okay, as I understand, the discussion is specific to the monument in the southern sector. The monument in the eastern sector, except for Apollo, heard you brought in the view of.
Correct.
We're not discussing that.
That's my, that was just to illustrate.
Yeah, no, just, yeah, just for the clarity. Vice Mayor Lamar?
You know, I got involved in this some months ago and met with Mark and emailed back and forth. Mark and I went from way south to way north looking at sites. I do believe that the monument should be moved. Speaking frankly, the artist had no say whatsoever. He was told whether we were going to go. The art, the artist and the art community never really agreed with it being that. The problem we have with the, being on the side of the road, while it might provide a photo op, it, it, one, right now it looks like it fell off a landscaping truck under the ditch. And it's very stark there. It doesn't, it really is not a good place at all for a vertical kind of sculpture. It's much more attractive when you have a tree or something behind it. Mark and I went around and looked at sites. One of the sites that Mark, and I got input from several people in the art community, including Mark. And the original purpose of those, those horses was to mark the boundaries of Cave Creek, people coming into Cave Creek. If we get, these are my, this is my personal observations. If they get too close to the town core, then we're going to have, you know, the horse, which is supposed to be a marker of Cave Creek. And then we're on top of the Eagle Scout monument. And then we've got people going, wait a minute, this town's completely schizophrenic. It's got, you know, monuments to the town every, you know, half mile. One of the sites that Mark chose as the artist is the site still down south where it is. It's across the road and in the median. There's a beautiful tree behind it. There's a place to do some, there's room in front. It's a wide median, there's a room in front to do lighting. There's a room in front to do some landscaping, some boulders, if we can get somebody to donate those. I think if we consider all of it, that, and the original antenna, and at least the opinions I've gotten from the art community and the input from the artists, that, you know, I understand financially he would be the one that's the star of it. So I think one way of honoring him, one is, I agree, we should have a bigger plaque. But we also should honor where he thinks it's going to look best. Because that's, that's him and that's his art, that's his heart, that's his hand, that's his craft. And he thinks it was better in the median with trees behind it. I'm the one with the artist on that and he wants to keep it. Unless you change your mind, Mark, he wants to keep it down as a welcome to Cave Creek. Because that's what it was intended to be. For a guy that took, and he was first told it was going to be this big and then he was told it was going to be this big and he spent a lot of money on this that he didn't get a return for. So I want to make it, make sure that the art community of this town and the artist gets their wishes at least considered by this council if we're going to move it. And I think we should move it because it's, it can look great and it just looks like an afterthought now. And that's not, that's not fair of the artist and it's not fair of the community. That's all that's.
Continue with discussion, Councilman Esser?
I just have a sidebar. I too, like Steve, went to see Mark and we had a discussion. And I attended the lean conference at Star Pass down in Tucson. So he gave me a whole bunch of brochures and about 250 of these cards. We didn't have a booth down there and neither did Carefree. So I approached Jim Lang from Scottsdale and asked him if I could distribute your information on their day. They went like hotcakes. He didn't give me enough stuff. And they liked the small horses and the whole display and it really, it turned out well. But I agree with most of what Steve has said. I don't know how we make a decision. Is the impact of the project for the bicycle lanes going to be a factor? Is this an opportunity to wait and see?
Mayor, I don't think that way.
I don't know how small the median should be. You want to see.
Yes, Paul.
Courtney, it's not going to have an impact, the biking project. And I think it was last week, Ian and I actually put two white stakes, I sent you an email of where that, Mr. Lamar was talking, what Mr. Lamar was talking about location. So there's two white stakes in and out. So that's kind of where we thought it fit, had the background and could put. We do have, on one of the Cave Creek sites, you do have the solar light on there now. You guys working, it's about, gives you room to do what you're looking at. I was going to say if Mark, Carol, if that's, was okay, and that's kind of the thought.
And we'll get to the public in a second. Vice Mayor, when you talk about the median, you're talking about the one close to the statue right up.
Right, that's right, that's why, in fact, you're going back a little bit. Stolen Cave Creek, it's the ones that break right, right before the horse. So it's, it's an easy one to do. It's like, it's a few hundred, it's only an hundred feet. It's just why it's off the road.
And Mayor, the tail end of my question is, and I didn't get to finish it. If we did this, when will we do it?
It's easy. Halloween?
You're going to put a mask on the horse?
Yes. We can do it.
Do you want to do it soon or later?
Yeah, no, well. Might as well do it soon. Because where it's situated now, it's not flattering. The statue, the artist, or the, or Councilman Bunch. Where the other one, this is from Mr. Sims. Where the other one is, is sitting in a median with a speed limit of 30 miles an hour. Is there any consideration putting this in the median where the speed limit is 45? And from a, from a safety standpoint, it's random margin, we'll pull all three to start.
No, you're actually, you're actually working across purposes to the desire that people just won't see it. I mean, but that's the problem. I don't see a safety issue at all with signs in the median. The bigger problem is you won't, the people you're asking to see the monument won't be able to see it as well. I don't see a safety issue.
And the other thing is maybe Mr. Carroll is kind of shortchanged. Maybe we could put, one of the hoods, they put a thing out there, we saw banners for us.
Well, I was just advising, I didn't realize that break away, that is a problem.
It is a problem.
Councilman McClancy?
I guess, no, I'm sorry.
You just told me, it's fixed, it doesn't have a, most, most signs in median break away to hit them. This apparently is fairly fixed.
Yes, thank you.
That would be a problem.
But it's also a problem on the side of the road. It's not, it's not a different problem, a bigger problem.
I agree.
Councilman McClancy has a question?
Well, I guess I would say that it appears that it would be better moved someplace. I think we'll have to find out if that's a possibility or not and then go have another discussion if we need to.
Okay, Councilman McGuire, discussion?
Yeah, I would point out that the placement along Blue Ridge, it does have those, the little saroyals in the back there. Would you be willing just to get some comments, Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, we're going, we're going to get to Mr. Carroll. I haven't put out the artist.
Thank you.
Just tell him.
My last comment. I know you Michael Backs, you could, the boy scout, he was a kind of boy scout to me, he was a project.
I was the last kid. The last kid will be taken care of by the boy scouts looking for the Eagle Backs. Okay, again, we're talking only about the statue on the southern sector. Assuming that we are not endangering traffic by placing it in the median, let's deal with the east-west problem first of all. I, I think that problem kind of cancels itself out because if we were to stash it down on the western sector on Carefree Highway, we're down to 26th Street. And the north side of Carefree Highway is Cave Creek jurisdiction. And the south side is Phoenix, so it would make no sense to put the statue there. And we encounter the same problem to the east where the part of the southern side is Cave Creek and then it quickly turns to Scottsdale. And the northern side is Carefree, so a statue there would not make any sense. Okay, let's go to, let's start with you, Mr. Carroll. To the microphone, if you would, please.
Yeah, I'm happy with the site that Peter chose. Or another site I thought of was maybe by Stagecoach Pass, just come up over the hill and see the house in the background and there's an area in the median there, that's my two possibility. Those are the two possibility I thought of. But I'm certainly happy with what.
Okay, where is Stagecoach Pass and the second one is where?
Oh, where the Peter.
With all the Vice Mayor is talking about?
Correct.
All right, he would be happy with that too. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just like to be part of the movie because I know how to take a part in, you know. So nothing gets damaged, that's all.
You have your number, yes. You'll be a part of this. You'll be a part of this. Otherwise, it's the Vice Mayor and me out there. Statue, no, I would do that. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment? Okay, we're back to council. And like the previous agenda item, we're seeking to give direction, which I believe as long as we are not creating a traffic hazard, that the location that the Vice Mayor spoke about is where we're trying to move the statue.
I'd like to thank the Councilman McGuire for putting all that together for us. We should discuss it and I really appreciate your work. Thanks for the good discussion, guys, on both these discussions.
And I believe in the location and the suggestion because that is where our, the boundary line is placed. Okay, South understands the direction?
Yes, sir.
Anything else in council? Motion to adjourn, council.
No, no.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, John Evans, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.